Good morning, everybody. Yeah, so I grabbed my coffee. Yeah, you know, we are getting quite many questions today. How TransFAC can be used in my cancer research? And that's something we are going to talk today. So it's a tool which can be very helpful for cancer research. So again, joined with your coffee and with your questions. My name is Alexander Kiel. And we will talk about how TransFAC can be used in cancer research and particularly in research of brain tumors. And let me share my screen. All right, so yeah, you know, today is a world brain tumor day. And that's our topic today. And because we have, as I said, many questions. You know, TransFAC is generally used mainly for predicting transcription factor binding sites, for predicting motifs in genome. So what? So how this can be used for research in real life? So how this can be used to find drug targets against cancer? Especially brain tumor is really very difficult to cure or do something else to help that. Okay, let's have a look. Just to remind you, actually, we are talking in TransFAC about transcription factors. And this is one picture of transcription factor, which is called E2F8 in this case. And that's a protein which expressed in nucleus. Well, it works in nucleus. And each binds to DNA and regulate, regulate a lot of genes, switching them on or off in their expression. And there are many of those transcription factors and they they regulate their target genes. And in TransFAC, we are actually, you know, collecting those so-called positional weight matrices, which you have here. It's a description of the motifs where these transcription factors can bind. For instance, this is a motif for E2F1. And we can use this motif to find new sites, which yet unknown, in front of transcription, in front of genes, you know, in or in any regulated regions of genes. And with that, we actually can predict whether this transcription factor can regulate expression of that gene. All right, so and we do it by several tools which we associated with TransFAC. And you can, you can do it when you have TransFAC. Basically, one tool is searching for enrichment of those motifs in the, in the genes, which are, for instance, are expressed in particular tumor. And compare this frequency of found binding sites in the promoter of those genes towards a background set of genes, which are could be genes which are, which are not expressed or which are, you know, not non-changing, although they're expressed, but they are non-changing, which means they, they don't care about expression sort of in different types of conditions. And then we found those motifs which are enriched. And then we claim that this transcription factor is involved in regulation of those genes. And then, of course, another important notion here is that the transcription factors, they often work together. So they make so-called composite complexes, which together bind to the target sites, which are, which can be nearby. And then they regulate genes altogether. And with this complex regulation, they, this is a mechanism how the genes can be specifically switched on in a particular situation when all of those transcription factors are active and available. And also the region, regulated region of those genes are available for the regulation. So, but the question, and there is a tool which can find, there are tools in our platform, in our associated with TransFAC, which allows to find those combinations of transcription factor binding sites. But the main focus of today is actually, what happened next? Okay, you found your motifs, you find your your transcription factors, you basically predicted then these transcription factors can regulate my genes. So what? And then the question is here is, is there any master regulator, we can call it? Is there any few factors or few molecules in the, in the cell which regulate the whole, orchestrate the whole set of these transcription factors altogether? Which means these five or six which we have here, they have to be activated. And this might happen through the signal transduction cascades in the cells. And then, then we can try to find these master regulators. Why? Because if we find these master regulators, then we can either influence on them by drugs and use them as drug targets. Or it could be like a master, you know, master key, which we can monitor. And if we see this master regulator active in the cell or in the human body, in liquid biopsies, for instance, we can detect, early detect development of those processes, which are going very far, very deep in the cells. So, and how to do that? How to find master regulators? First, we have to understand that this signal transduction is a is a very complex process. And the individual, individual steps in this signal transduction cascades, I so-called, you know, signaling reactions. Basically, these reactions are normal reactions. So like it is shown here. So basically, there is one kinase, which is expressed and present as a protein in the cell. But to be active, it has to be phosphorylated. Maybe not, it's in so many different positions. But maybe just in one position. And then depending on the position of a relation, it will become active or inactive. And then there is another kinase or another enzyme, usually kinase, which is not doing that. And basically, when this is active, then it is able to activate another one. So in the signal transduction sort of cascades, we usually see it as a, as a, like the PKA, CEA, for instance, activate this one. But in reality, it means it's actually changed the first relation form of that, of that protein. Okay, so these are individual steps. And then, of course, those steps, you know, can happen in any cells. And they can, but so many of them. So when we start building a database called Transpass many years, many years ago, where we collected those individual steps into, into the database. And then we can connect them to each other. So for instance, we can ask a question, what happens next? And what happens in two steps? And then we, we do it in all directions. And then you can get, we can get some network like that, where the first molecule was somewhere here. And then you do the steps through these cascades and you go in all kind of directions, all kind of possibilities, which can happen in average cell. But of course, not all of these reactions are going on in each individual time point in the cell or under certain conditions. So that's why we, this is just the potential, the potential network of the interactions. So, and why should we understand that? Because finally, somewhere at the end of that cascade, we see transcription factors, like it is present on this picture. So for instance, we have a set of genes in the cell, which are expressed in the tumor cell, for instance. They start expressing and then that leads to the tumor progression. But then we ask a question, how these genes are regulated? And we search for motifs in the promoters of those genes, which takes, tell us which transcription factors are mostly involved in those, in those regulation of those genes. And then asking question, which are master regulators? We actually can predict that, you know, there is a cascade and there is a whole network. And we have to find a way from that master regulator to all of those transcription factors. So basically, similar like you do in your, in your navigator, in your car. You want to go from this point to this point or maybe from this to a point to several different points. And then you need an algorithm which will find the way through this whole network. And we have such algorithms, which actually are working in a backward direction. So in fact, what we start with, we start from the list of genes, right? So we, we start from list of genes, which we got from, for instance, from RNA-seq experiment, which is presented here. You know, like we have, you know, NGS sequencing of RNA. And we see that this particular RNA has a lot of reads, which means it's highly expressed in tumor. So and then with that, we can see that this set of genes actually highly expressed and also differentially expressed, which means they, they express higher or lower than it was in the normal conditions. And then we search for these motifs, as I said. And then now we have this set of transcription factors. And then we need an algorithm which will go through this network, actually backwards against the arrows and find basically the master regulator in that network. And of course, this, the network is very complex and the master regulator could be not just one. And maybe there, we don't know how, how actually true we are with this master regulator. The concept here is that we will mostly, we have a chance to find the true one is a concept of big elephant, you know, like it is shown in this picture. So if, if you have a master, if you have actually something in the cell, which is super active and the control, and it produces a lot of signal in the cell, then through, through that mechanism, through this cascade, you will be able to find this elephant in the, in the room. Because it's so noisy, you know, it produces a lot of signal. So this concept of a big elephant in the room. So in an arbitrary manner, so basically what we do, we have this network. And there is a set of transcription factors, which are shown here in blue. And then the algorithm tries to find the so-called shortest path in this graph. And it calculates for each of the master regulator, it calculates so-called score, the master regulator's score, which simply is calculated by this formula. It looks complicated, but basically it tells a simple thing. So if, if you have a master, if you have a molecule, you can count how many of the transcription factors from your list can be reached through this number of steps. We consider this number of steps, steps are. And then you can count how many, what is proportion of your, of your initial set of transcription factors, which can be reached through this cascade. In addition, we can compute how many other transcription factors, which are not really in my list, but present in the database, can be also reached. And then we have this ratio telling us, you know, the more factors from your list you find and the less factors from other, you know, non-relevant factors are found, then the better is the score. So we can then score of this, each of these master regulators and tell which one is at the top. That's actually done. But also we made a bit of complication here related to, to lack of information. And if you have additional information, it can be involved in the algorithm. So basically, this network, which we are looking and which we are analyzing, which is shown here, is a network of these activation interactions, right? And we give a weight, you know, like a distance on a, on a map. If you have a distance, if you have a map and in your, in your car and you can navigate through the map, you have distance between different cities. And in default, this distance between different molecules here are one. So equal, equal distance. But that's not the truth. So some of the molecules actually more important and some are less important. What you mean important? And if you have additional information telling us that, for instance, this molecule is really involved in the process. Now, how do we know that? Because we measured this in another experiment. For instance, we did a proteomics experiments or phosphoproteomics. And we found that this protein is indeed changing in the tumor cell. Then what we can do, we can give it different weights to those connections. And give a, this actually not the weights, this are distance. And we tell that this distance is very short, it's zero. And the further this distance also decreases. So by doing that, we let the algorithm find the true way rather than going the wrong way. And through that way, we can predict a better, we can better predict the real master regulators. And that's the first step in the algorithm. Actually, it's even going further. So we ask a question, how probable to find this master regulator by random chance? Because you know, there are, there are in our networks, in natural networks, in any kind of natural networks, including the signal transaction network in the cell, there are so-called hubs. So there are molecules, proteins, which involved in many, many different reactions. And if you have such a hub, of course, it can be the master regulator in any kind of conditions. But this master regulator is not very specific. And it could be found in any runs by random chance, perhaps. And that's why we, we calculate in addition probability to find this master regulator by random chance, simply by randomizing the input. So actually, our input is a set of transcription factors, which we found in our initial analysis. And then we can randomize this set of factors, just picking the same number of factors, but just to differ from a database and do it many, many times, like 10,000 times. And then we estimate in how many cases my master regulator actually found by this random input. And if this number of cases it found is very small, that means it's a very low probability to find this by random chance. And we have this P value, which tells us that this master regulator not only have a high score, but it also have a low chance to be found by random chance. And to do, there is another, yeah, to estimate or kind of a measure, which tells us how far it is from random. We have so-called Z score, which, which tells us how far this, you know, this score from the random score in number of sigmas. But well, that's, that's a standard, standard Z score calculation. And the higher this Z score, the more on random is this our finding. So that's how this algorithm works. And actually, yeah, as I said, by, by doing this additional weighting through, through this additional weights, if you know, the proteins are involved in the process, then we actually can find the true master regulator by, you know, pushing the algorithm towards that part of the network, which is supposed to be better studied and found to be involved. Okay, that's actually very nice, you can find master regulators. But it's very often, and especially that's important for tumor cells, they, they are flexible. So the tumor cells, they keep changing. And that's a big problem. Because if you find, for instance, a master regulator or you know master regulator or a particular tumor type, then there, there might be a therapy to inhibit that master regulator. And then to inhibit the whole tumor. But the tumor is sneaky and it goes away from that press. And it actually finds another way of regulating the same set of genes through so-called, you know, rewiring of the whole network. So it finds another new master regulator after some search and avoiding the first therapy. That, that's how that often happen. And the people gets resistance to the first therapy and they have to find another therapy. So, and that happens, as we found in many cases, through so-called positive feedback loops, which are shown here. So one of that positive feedback loop, so which tells you this new master regulator, it's actually taking over the whole control of the, of the genes through this corruption, we could call it. Because what it happens, it activates through this cascade many genes, including the gene which encode itself. So including himself, you know. And by doing that, any activity of that molecule will only increase its own activity. So it goes into this never-ending loop. And you get many cases when initial master regulator, which was found by a tumor, found sort of in a random process, start very rapidly accelerate and you get, you get a certain, certain molecule or certain regulatory protein really increased in thousands and tens of thousands of times compared to the normal condition. And that happening, and since that, that's a case, we, we decided to use this information about existence of this positive feedback loops for the selection of the true, true master regulators. So again, so to select the true master regulator, we have to do, you know, three things. First, we have to find the potential master regulator. Second, we have to estimate the probability that's, it's a, it's a true one. So it's not true, but it's unprobable by random chance. So give higher weight to those master regulators. And then third, to ensure that this master regulator has the feedback loops from, from the, from the genes which it actively activate. And after these three conditions, we we postulate that those master regulators are really important for the cell, for the important for this, you know, pathological conditions, important for the tumor cells to survive. And that's maybe our most important targets for therapy or for the biomarkers. And as is shown in this paper, we call it as walking pathways. Because why walking? Because we have this analogy that actually the whole cascade of this, of the cell is not really changing too much. What is changing is the set of, a set of target genes. So which target, which genes are really targeting, targeted by those transcription factors. And so you can say that this pathway is walking away from the original targeting of original target genes. It walks a ways through the pathological targeting. And one, once we have, as I said, such a cascade, then basically, we, we can say that those, those master regulators, which are here, best therapeutic targets. And maybe also can, the genes which are importing those master regulators are maybe good biomarkers. Moreover, we can find special markers in near those genes, which are changing their regulation and what happens in the tumor. You know, particular regions which are regulating genes, they got mutilated or demitulated, because those genes has to be open or closed. And then those mutilation marks, and I want to show it today, they can, can change. And then looking at those mutilation marks, which are in regulator regions of the master regulator genes, give us a very good chance to find those, those mutilation marks as a very good diagnostic or prognostic biomarkers. Okay, so you see this concept, which we call upstream analysis. So we start from motifs, just finding standard. With TransFAC, you know, as you probably know, we can find motifs. But these motifs are very useful to build the whole, whole pathological cascade on top of them. And we call this upstream analysis, because it goes from, from those motifs upstream into the reasoning. So it tries to find the reason for, for those motifs to, to activate those genes. And this whole upstream analysis, and I want to show you a little glimpse of that tool. Now, we, we decided at some point that why not to make it completely automatic? So like using this automatic car. When, when you have your data and your omics data and you put it into, into the system from one patient or from a group of patient. And then it automatically goes forward to find those master regulators. And then, and then it, it actually predicts which master regulators are most potentially involved. And even going further to find the potential, you know, known drugs, which can be working with these master regulators, like giving potential drugs to work with further on. So and this is interface, I will show you today. So it's very simple. You, you have like a drop, drop box, you know, a box, where you can drop your various files. For instance, files from transcriptomics and epigenomics. As I told today, for instance, if you have data about mutilation, CPG, mutilation, you can put it together with transcriptomics. Or you have proteomics there, for instance, as I showed to you. You, you know which, which proteins or which phosphoproteins are involved in the process. You can give this list here. And then it will combine all this into one search. And it will give you this, this cascade, as I said. And then it will even, you know, predict which, which of the potential drugs or active, active compounds can be working against those targets. And yeah, it's also produces a nice report, which can be, you know, used for further publications. I showed this slide at the end, so just showing that actually what we are talking here about is so-called multi-target therapy. And that's something maybe goes beyond the topic of today. But you know, many of those drugs have multiple targets. And one of the idea, which is presented on this picture, that instead of like doing very individually inhibiting each of the targets, we see that actually there are number of master regulators, which, which are working with, and increasing the survival of tumor cells. And what can be done is actually working on all of these master regulators altogether is multiple, multiple compounds. All these compounds which targeting multiple targets. Okay, so that's the overview of, of the whole pipeline. And I want to show you today one results of, of analysis, which was published by us a couple of years ago, where we studied actually data from glioblastoma survival. And we came up with a list of biomarkers, which are associated with survival. So actually, that's important question, you know. First, and I will touch a little bit today. You, it would be nice to have a tool which would predict, you know, probability or which would, you know, be a prediction tool for early diagnostic of the, of the cancer, of the tumor. So, and for that, there is one possible way. But once the patient has a cancer, there is important, important question, whether this is aggressive form of tumor and it has to be, you know, treated aggressively or it, it gives a certain, you know, possibility to survive. And so, and then there are particular biomarkers, which can tell us whether this form of tumor, which is, which is observed in, in that particular patient is, you know, either short survival pattern or long survival pattern. And that's, you know, still in a framework of, of prediction of what, what, of what to do. Well, basically, what, what is the future? But still, it doesn't answer the question, what to do? And towards that question, what kind of therapy would be useful for that type of tumor? That's a very important question. And I want to show also one, one example today, which answers that particular question. All right, so with that, let me go directly into the, into the tool, which, as I said, is called, is called Genome Enhancer. And once you have a account in that tool, you, you log in. And then, okay, I have already some results on top. Let me close that. So the first thing, what it shows you is a list of projects which you have. And you can create your new project to upload your data. And what I would show today is this project, Regulatory Networks of Gliablastoma Survival. That's a exactly the run of the algorithm, which was a basis for that paper, which we published on survival biomarkers. So you, we had put here the files, so you don't see them now. But then those files actually seen in, in that, in that tool. So let me show it in the tree, so you, you see those files here. And then you drag and drop them into that box. And then you simply select which of the data are important for your current study. Uh study and uh in this case, what we did, we uh collected um hundred nineteen. Uh hundred fifteen uh genes which are upregulated in the um in the tumors. Which have a which are which are long uh short survival compared to the tumors which are long survival, what means short and long? So in case of glioblastoma, uh the short survival are actually low than one year. Or even shorter, I think, so uh these are the uh tumors which are very aggressive. And the long survival means uh you know those uh which patients we can survive with the tumor several years. And uh that's uh you know, uh then the tumor is not so aggressive. So and uh when we compared this type of tumors um in a in a analysis, in our analysis inside the platform. Which I showed before, so uh we found this uh set of genes and now we put these genes into the genome enhancer tool. And then we uh we go further and here is a starting page of that tool where we have to select the disease. We say uh glioblastoma. Uh select glioblastoma and uh we uh put uh this set of genes which we selected, you can. Put here more sets, uh there is, you know, several possibilities, but actually in this case, it was just one set of genes. And we start the analysis. So um I will not start it now because it takes uh several hours. Uh to finish, I will uh show uh the results, so we have you when it is finished. It produces this um uh brief tale and full story and let's have a look at the full story. So it produces this uh report, uh which tells you immediately at the top, uh which are the most important master regulators. It selects two, you know, two most important master regulators, uh which it found. And also it uh shows the three most important transcription factors which uh below, so on that network. Which I showed in my presentation, you know, at the top you have master regulators and the bottom you have transcription factors. And it shows uh these uh three as most important and these two as you know as those which we found. And then it tells the whole story, you know, uh which genes it found and what are the gene ontology terms. Uh which um they belong to. And actually, uh also, as I said, the topic today is mainly focused on uh on networks and pathways. It also actually uh shows uh which uh uh belong to which canonical pathways. Uh these um these genes which we started with uh belong to. And um actually, uh the canonical pathways are those pathways which you see in many pictures and we'll see it today as well a bit. Uh although I showed, I told, told you that in the tumor especially, those pathways are all rewired. Still, uh you know, there is a basic part of those pathways which are canonical and they work, you know, in most of the cases. And we can still map uh to them those uh genes and you see here, uh we see here the NT pathway. Uh which activates a better cutting in and also you see here TGF beta pathway and um. Actually, VEGF receptor pathway and we'll uh see uh some picture of that. Uh so it gives a little bit of information to belong to which part of the whole network of signal transaction this. Uh these genes belong to, but that's a only very superficial official uh look at this uh story. So when it go further, uh it actually reports which of the motives. Uh of transcription factors, so those transphac motives, they are shown here. Uh they are present more in the promoters of this hundred fifteen genes which are upregulated in short survivals. Uh compared to the non-change genes, so there are a number of genes. Which uh didn't have a change expression, so housekeeping genes. Genes simply not involving in involved in the in the tumor growth. Or actually genes which are involved in the tumor growth, but they are not different. So in a long survival and uh short survival, uh they they are the same. Here, our first and most important focus on those genes which are different, which uh which are showing really short survival signature. Right, and actually, I as you can see on this diagram, just a bit explanation here, the red bars. Are the uh concentration of those motives, so they come in clusters. Uh in uh in the promoters of uh upregulated genes. Uh and you see these uh red boxes are at the right side, so which means you in average, you have many of those motives in in that. In that those promoters and the blue bars are concentration of the same motives, but. In the non-change genes and you see the difference is pretty significant, so it's uh the p-value significance. The AUC um area on the uh the rock curve is pretty high. And uh you also see which transcription factors actually uh involved here. And among them, uh you see NFCA B, it's a famous transcription factor which involved in. Uh activating uh you know many uh many signals, growth signals. Uh and also early response signals and actually uh there are other factors which are involved in uh in the. Uh in development of the cells and in development of tissues. Uh in the paper, we discuss this Ra- Ra- one uh transcription factor, which is from a family of AP one. Uh factors which are also known to be involved in in those cancer. And especially in uh in the in tumors of uh gliomas and um you know brain tumors. Uh so actually, um this set of factors which is again listed here. Is now taking for a for a further analysis and now we will focus on that network, uh which um. Uh the system has constructed for us, so we click here and we see it's in in a more detailed way. So again, as you can see here, these blue guys are the transcription factors, so you see here this NFCA B. Left one and actually, uh yeah, you will, I will also tell about these shadows here. Uh the shadows here, actually, uh looking back to the original data and checking which of those uh genes. Uh genes encoding those proteins uh may be upregulated and downregulated, so we have. Uh and among those all transcription factors which found by the motive search. We found that left one, for instance, is uh also upregulated in those uh particular types of survival. Uh patients, so which uh tells them that left one is indeed is a good candidate. Uh actually, it doesn't tell uh that others are not good candidates because uh they might, the gene might be not necessarily upregulated, but still the protein. Is activated and involved in regulation, so that's uh the transcription factors, the blue guys. And then uh we have these uh boxes here, which are the genes. So and you see the transcription factors are actually regulating uh those genes and these are the genes. Uh which uh were in our original list, so upregulated genes in this short survival. And then uh the algorithm builds this um upstream of the transcription factors, eh the whole is cascade. As I showed in the in the diagram, uh in the uh searching for master regulators. And uh it uh found this um pink uh master regulators and among them you see. Various forms of VEGF uh in various forms, you know, the. Uh the VGF is a is a gene, but uh it produces several proteins in different uh forms. Uh either by splice variants or cross processing and these uh different forms may be involved in different way and the algorithm actually. Uh take them all into account. And uh we see here, uh actually, uh VNT uh pathway components as um. As we already observed by mapping them into the standard uh standard um. And canonical pathways. And uh we see here also this IGFBP two, which was reported in this paper as a important candidate and indeed you uh you see. Uh it's uh one of the most highly upregulated one, we also here have AGB uh IGFBP five. Uh which is also seem to be involved, but uh in the paper we had to focus on that one. But in fact, what we have to do is to uh focus on um on many of them. Because as I said, uh many of them are important as a master regulators. So uh right, so a- actually, just a uh brief, uh going back to the to the report, uh. In this report, you can also find information about the drugs. So eh eh whether you're interested in that or not, uh you might be, you know, in important to have a look at that, so basically those master regulators. Uh they can be targeted by uh several drugs and uh these are so-called uh drug targets. So which means uh among those master regulators which we predicted, there are a number of. Uh proteins which are already known as the targets for uh various drugs. And here we see the number of drugs which are already on the market, which were targeting uh different of those proteins, so for instance, VGFA. Has thirty-six uh drugs available, so uh and so they it's give a higher chance that um this. In this case, uh this could be used for um you know for the therapy. And it also produces small uh small diagram uh of the most important uh master regulators. And at the end, it actually gives a list of uh drugs. Uh which are either in the clinical trials or already um you know validated and um yeah, it's you know for a given. Um type of tumor. And for instance, you see Bevacizumab is already in phase uh three clinical trial for glioblastoma. So it's maybe not yet uh in not in all countries i- is uh accepted as a proven therapy, uh accepted therapy. But uh it's already in clinical trial uh phase three, so it's pretty far uh pro- advanced and indeed um our tool. Has found it and rated it as a as one of the top candidate, among them, we also have a repurposing drug, so in case if you're interested in. Drug repurposing, you have here a number of candidates which might be interesting for you. So that's uh but again, coming back to the uh to this story about the network. Uh let's have a look a little bit more in in deep in depth, what you can do with that. Uh diagrams with that not those networks, so uh for that we uh we actually hmm change. We we are going cha- going to change to a platform. So you remember maybe in my previous uh coffee breaks, I showed you this uh this magic. So either upper right corner, you actually can change the completely change the whole interface. So here we change to the platform interface, uh which uh which have a actually a different look on the same set of data. So we with the platform, we can really go into uh into details to to see what's going on. So uh for you see it gets additional panels here, so if you click on the wizard, you get the uh uh uh. Tool, you know, uh overview of all available tools in the platform. Among them, uh we have this uh you know, diff- depending on the data which you can you import, so that's um. We going back to the original, uh to the uh basic uh tools which are used in the whole pipeline, which I just predict uh showed to you. Uh and then if you open these panels, uh we can see where we are in which of the folder, so here are my projects. And you see this is a project which we were working as regulatory networks uh in of glioblastoma survival. And we were looking at this report, which is also here, and we were looking at this network. And which uh which is inside of those uh those folders, so let's uh mid-dive in in that inside. So show in the tree. So you see how many uh different files this uh pipeline has produced. And uh one of that file is this uh this particular network. Uh and um and there are other files which gives uh this intermediate uh result, so for instance. Uh this uh file, uh we which is called Feedback Controlled Master Regulators. It's a list of uh twenty-six genes, uh you see ensemble uh IDs in front of them. Uh which are these uh twenty-six master regulators which were found in in our analysis. So basically, out of this hundred nineteen uh genes which were initially um uh input our analysis. Uh we um the the algorithm selected this twenty-six, which not only upregulated, but they also as as you show, as you seen. They involved in this cascade of regulation with all possible feedback loops and they have a a high and um statistically significant. Uh upstream uh score, keynote score we call it, so this is our list of most important biomarkers. Uh so what we can do, we can basically map them on different pathways or different other categories. Uh to see whether um basically they have something in common. Uh these um master regulators, right, so for that we can go need now to any of those tools which we. Have here and we were talking about this in previous uh coffee breaks. For instance, we have here the tools uh which can work with genes or protein list, so um for instance, we can um click here, discover functional. Enrichment and uh functional classification, uh we can click here and ask a question. Uh whether my list of two uh of of genes belong to geo categories or diseases or pathways. So what we do is simply drop and drop it here. And uh that's uh actually it, so let's um me give a different name. And the run the uh the workflow, so uh we also can see actually this workflow um here below. And you see actually uh how it is uh going through different steps. Uh so one step is already finished, so this uh conversion and now it's uh going through uh different um yeah. Different databases to map my set of genes. And uh it's automatically opening the results. So for instance, what you see now is uh how my master regulators are. Uh expressed according to the gene ontology and as you see at the top, extra cellular, so it's a. Eh it's very good news actually that um these um these master regulators are actually available for treatment. Because they extra cellular and uh for instance, it also mapped them to our ontology of diseases of biomarkers of diseases. And uh you see there uh there's very highly significant enrichment of the biomarker from various types of neoplasma and. Uh the ne- generally neoplasma in total and uh you can uh search here for uh for glioblastoma. Uh so in the title of that oh of that table um. So uh and you see that actually uh twelve of the of this out of our hmm twenty-nine, right? Uh biomarkers uh correlative is glioma and six of them actually causal for glioblastoma, it's already known. And uh it's um actually uh collected in our database. Uh and that probability is significant, so the enrichment of this causal biomarkers among our um our. Uh targets, among our master regulators and you see EIGFBP two, which was a focus of that paper is indeed in among that. Alright, so um just a few comments on on other uh important things, for instance. Uh we, as I mentioned, uh important question is not simply to predict uh and to diagnose this. Uh disease, but also to treat it. And uh now various uh ways of treating this disease are experimenting and people are experimenting a lot with immunotherapy. And they found out that uh some of the patients are responding to immunotherapy and some are not. And uh it's important to know which biomarkers are actually uh correlating with the response. Because uh actually, if uh you see that this patient will respond, you will treat it with uh immunotherapy. Uh but if not, if you if you see that this patient probably will not respond, probably it's better to actually uh to try something else. Uh because just, you know, any months of treatment and wrong treatment or not effective treatment. Uh will uh simply, you know, since this disease is probably is you know growing very, very fast, so there is not enough time to. Uh to to do a lot of experiments, so you have to really know in advance uh uh what would be the best treatment. And we have uh found this data in gene expression omnibus of comparison of responders and non-responders to immunotherapy. Uh for uh glioblast, I think it was pro-glioma. And uh uh and uh again, this tool generated, yeah, it was, no, it was glioblastoma actually. Uh and we found this uh most important biomarkers of among the non-responders. Uh to immunotherapy and uh actually at the end, uh you see also this um. This network which was constructed by this tool and what is important, actually, it uh the tool is proposing. Uh the alternative therapy, uh which for that type of patients, if immunotherapy doesn't work, so probably. Uh it's a it's a good idea to apply some other therapy and it based on those master regulators which it predicts. It um it uh predi- pro- proposes uh for instance, this drug which in fact already. Approved for glioblastoma and uh it's a so it's already approved, but you if you actually know, have more information. About that particular patient, uh that. that for, for this type of patients, this seem to be this drug can be more effective, then it's a good information for the doctor. All right, so I think I will finish with this big topic today. I will come to this topic in probably next coffee breaks. Because as you know, there are so many angles on that topic and different types of cancer. And I didn't touch today this epigenetic biomarkers, which is important, you know, topic, because this especially GC mutilations, SPG mutilation, those biomarkers can be found in the liquid biopsy. So it would be very useful for, for early diagnostics and some, and stuff like that. So with that, I, I want to finish today. My part concerning the, you know, the big, answering the big question. But as I said, please put your questions to anything, either to what I was talking about today or to, to anything related to transphark, any other questions. So we have, you know, I'm here. So we have another maybe fifteen, twenty minutes. If you have questions, just think about. And I will answer. Okay, there's a first question. Are there TF and enhancer database about no human primates? No human primates, wow. Yeah, that's, that's very interesting question. And all right. So it's transcription factors and enhancer database. Actually, not to my knowledge. In fact, what we, we have in transphark, as you can, as you look, if you look at the transphark database and look at profiles, which are collection of positional eight matrices, so motifs, binding motifs for various transcription factors. We collected here, you know, if you look at a number of entries, we, we have ten thousand two hundred ninety-seven matrices. But they are split into different these classes. And one big class is so-called vertebrates. And vertebrates include, of course, human, mouse, rat, but also primates, of course. And it goes to all vertebrates. And it's, it's a pretty big group, because of course you, you get very primitive vertebrates, which very far very in evolutionary distance from human. And still we apply the same set of matrices. And the reason is that, in fact, the transcription factor, they are, on one side, are very flexible in evolution, so they are changing very quickly. But the DNA binding domain, the domain of binding to, to their sites is pretty conserved. Especially between human and primates. I must say, most of the cases, it will be simply the same. That's why, as you can see, this motif is, although it was built probably on non-sites from a particular, particular organism, maybe on human sites. But we extend it to the whole vertebrate class. So that's our approach. And you have to, you know, take it with a care, but that's basically how it works. Another problem, another thing is actually the enhancers. Of course, enhancers are evolving so rapidly, you have different enhancers between different people. You have different enhancers in different tissues, in different situations. For instance, in tumors, there are different enhancers compared to the normal cells. So and of course, there are different enhancers between human and chimpanzee or other primates. So and to my knowledge, to, we don't, there is no no database of answers for primates. But what I must say that this knowledge about enhancers is, is of course very useful, but not really limiting use. Because what, what happening? You know, enhancers, they work and maybe you can detect them in one particular tissue. For instance, you, you know that this region of genome is enhancer in liver. But in, in your particular study, in your, in your cells, this enhancer for sure will not work. There'll be another enhancer still unknown. So in most of the cases, you, anyway, you work with unknown situation. So what I would recommend is basically to apply our tools like this search for the clusters of binding sites. And this search for the clusters of binding sites, actually finding enhancers for, which are working for your situation. So you take your primate list of genes, list of genes from, from your organism you are studying and, and put it in the system under standard, under human condition. And it will generate hypotheses. Actually, if you have a chim genome, you can download, upload it into the system as well. And it will not so automatic, the order like is a human genome. But there are tools and I showed in one of my videos, how to import a new genome and how to apply tools. You can actually use a real chim genome to, to search for those clusters of size, not in the human promoters, but in the chim promoters. And they for sure will be different from the human ones. Okay. All right, so there is another question. Is there a classical publication involving GeneXplain related to that topic? All right, yes, I, in one of my slides, I, I showed a paper which were published in twenty-one. It's, it's, it's called Walking Pathways. And that paper is describing one particular case. We actually studied, we applied these tools to study colon cancer. So I didn't went into that details today because today I was talking about glioblastoma. And actually, one publication is in the glioblastoma, which I also showed. Although in, in that publication about glioblastoma, we, we didn't show too much of the tool. Actually, in this walking pathway, a paper devoted to, to colon cancer biomarkers. We described a lot about these algorithms. So please finding, find those papers. You can find them on our website or just Google me in, or in PubMed and you find those papers. All right, so we can also is, yes, and good that you're asking. Actually, there are several projects which we involve by ourselves, as GeneXplain. They are funded by European Committee or by, by our internal German funding. So and they are related to different cancers. So and we have on glioblastoma, one project. And currently, we have a project on extension of this glioblastoma project, which is talking about microenvironment. So we are going to extend our tool towards understanding how, how this the same concept of upregulation, of upstream analysis with feedback loops can be extended to multicellular condition. When actually not everything, not happening inside one tumor cells, but actually it goes through through micro, micro tumor, microenvironment. And that will involve the single cell transcriptomics data analysis and many other things. But that's the future. We are working that project. So soon we'll have such kind of tools also in our system. Another question. Can we check these results with the data of mutations in the samples? Won't that help find up or down regulated with respect to the mutation profile? Very good question. Thank you very much. So as you so as you have seen, I, I did mention this today about mutations. Well, actually, it's easier to form, to show it in platform. So if you, if you go here at the top, we have this, this section here in the GeneXplain platform called genomic variants. And this helps us to analyze mutation data. And there are two types of mutations, well, with mutation data. And since we are talking today about tumor, that's really mutation. So those mutations which are happening in, in the tumor cells, and there are plenty of them. And actually, this, this algorithms which we have here, what they, we, you can do is, in fact, first you can load here data in VCF format. You know, VCF format, you probably know that's, that's a format of files which carry information about mutations. And then these VCF files will be first mapped on the genome. You see, you, you know, convert to VCF files and you map them into genome. And then it will identify the genes which are associated with which are located nearby. And then you can work with those genes further by analyzing, you know, promoters of the gene. But moreover, you can actually analyze how mutation is changing transcription factor binding sites. We have tools here which can, you identify, you see transcription factor binding sites affected by genomic variations and mutations. So they, they either can change the sites by themselves or they can happen in the region near, you know, because it's not only changing the file, the site, but it's also changing the, the whole environment. And if the transcription factors binding in a complex, that just one mutation can either create or destroy the whole composite complex. And that's also the tools which have to be, they, they, they are here. Moreover, as you, as was in your question, this could be combined with expression data. So in this genome enhancer tool, you can put a transcriptomics data and a VCF file into, into the tool and it will work together. So actually, here among the examples, I don't think we have such example like transcriptomics and VCF. But what we have here is an example of in a small, non-small cell lung carcinoma, when the input was just VCF file. And that's, for instance, you know, the VCF file, which is mapped to the genome. So this is, you know, genomic coordinates and you can put here the genes from, from that genome to see where those, you know, those, those mutations are falling in. But then what you do, you, you run this through the genome enhancer. And it generated this, this report. And now in the report, you, you see where, in which genes this mutations are actually fitting in introns or in exons, all those genes, they are not only changing the the protein structure, but they also, most important for this algorithm, they are changing the transcription factor binding sites. And here, you can see where exactly. So it had, give you this table where it tells that this motif, for example, which creates, which you can recognize binding sites for CRAP, for CRAP factor, that a number of cases when mutation is actually leads to the loss of those sites is significantly higher than it can be observed by random chance. You see that it actually happened in seven hundred cases, but by random chances must be much slower. So it gives us evidence that these mutations are destroying systematically CRAP sites. And this information is involved again in, in predicting which transcription factors here are important for regulating my genes. So as you can see, this information about mutations to either alone or together with expression data can help again to, to analyze your data, to predict master regulators and go further to predict target genes. Okay, so thank you for your questions. Maybe there are more questions. So you can see also in the chat box, you see links for our publications. Yeah, there are three publications mentioned here, so there, there you can go directly with the link. Okay, there we have another question. Thank you very much. Let me read it. If I have RNA sick data of my patient, which additional omics data could improve the analysis with your tool effectively? X variants, X, X variants, protein expression, methylation. Well, optimally, all of those which you mentioned. So RNA six, it's like a must have. And then, well, and you mentioned variants like limitations that you probably will have and protein expression and methylation, right? So if you have all of them, the tool can keep, can take information from all of them. But of course, indeed, that's very expensive and maybe not very effective. So your question is which of those combinations are most effective? I must say, I would say the methylation is the most effective combination with RNA sick. And in fact, you know, when you have RNA sick data in the form of, you know, if you have actually original raw files as a fast queue files. Then, and you can start the analysis in genome enhancer directly from fast queue files. So we have here in genome enhancer, we have actually possibility to load the fast queue files, like in this example. So the fast queue files were loaded. And then if the system knows, if it sees that these are fast queue files, it first will analyze the fast queue files. And it has also a part of the analysis which calls for mutations. You know, you can may sell, tell to me that, of course, based on RNA, those mutation calls are not very reliable. It's much better to have exome sequencing to find those mutations. But I would not say so. First, RNA sick gives you information not only about exons, but also, you know, RNAs are expressed in many cases through the regulatory regions or enhancer regions, as you know, there are also transcript. So which means with this mutation pool, you, we can get additional information. So actually, get mutations for granted. So you have RNA sick, you is doing RNA sick and by putting fast queue files in the system, you can, you get both omics, transcriptomics and genomics in a, in a sense. With a certain, of course, caution. But again, you know, our analysis of mutation in, in, in the part which analyzing the the change of prediction binding sites is pretty much statistical based. So we are checking quantities, how many sites were changed, not exactly each of the site. Mutation are really important. So and even if a certain part of those mutations which you call from RNA sick are noisy, still the, it can give you a statistical push toward the certain binding motives. That's right. And in addition, you can do CPG methylation, either with with, you know, microarrays, like infinite microarray or new types now, which gives you methylation sites, although not true call, you know, each of the CPG, but only those ones which are, which are chosen in the array. But still, this give you information which of the regions of the genome are changing. And this tells you actually which regions are active or inactive. So they, what happens in the tumor in terms of closing or opening a certain regions in genome. And that gives you information where to look for the motives around it. So again, the combination of RNA sick with methylation may be one of the, you know, optimum, optimal combination. All right, thank you for that question. Again, thank you very much for coming today and you can come next time as well. There'll be another topic. See you then. Goodbye.